Mr. Chairman, we do underemployment.
Okay. First on our agenda, our agencies, we have CASA. Somebody here?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I regret that I have to leave here at 7:30 sharp. Just let people know so you don't think I'm just bugging out.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll speak fast, I promise, so we don't take up too much of your time.
Thank you.
My name's Tara. I'm with CASA of New Hampshire. We've received funding from the town of Wolfboro for the past several years, and we're requesting level funding again at 2,000 to support the children who have CASA volunteer advocates in the town and the advocates who are community members who are doing the work. If you have any questions about how it's used or what your advocates are involved with, I'd be happy to share. I also have some updated budget numbers should you need those.
Does anybody have any questions at this point?
We should get those updated budget numbers. That would be nice.
Yeah, absolutely. I've got plenty of copies, so I can pass them out for everybody.
Okay. Next is Lakes Region VNA.
Thank you so much for having us. My name is Dr. Erin Josby. I have the privilege of serving as CEO at Lakes Region VNA, and I'm accompanied by my Chief Finance Officer, Mr. Jim Harnett. Lakes Region VNA has served the Lakes Region now for more than 100 years. We serve over 40 towns, Wolfboro being primary among them. I've got Jim here to tell you a little bit about how our request for funds is used. But again, typically, all the support that we receive goes towards three different buckets. One is charitable care. One is for ongoing wellness and community-based activities. And the third is for professional development and tuition reimbursement for students in the area who are pursuing careers in clinical sciences, as well as our own professional staff, so that they can continue to bring the very best of quality care to our communities.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. Lakes Region Visiting Nurse Association respectfully requests account appropriation in the amount of $5,000 for the 2026 calendar year to support our essential home-based healthcare services for the Wolfboro residents. Your continued support enables us to meet the growing need for home-based care, even as federal Medicare reimbursements continue to decline. We are deeply grateful for your past generosity and respectfully ask for your partnership once again in 2026, so that every resident, regardless of financial means, can access compassionate and professional care in the comfort of their home. Over the past year, Lakes Region VNA made 1,068 home visits to 40 individual Wolfboro residents. This also includes providing $5,000 in charitable care to one specific resident in Wolfboro. Additionally, Lakes Region VNA provided a flu clinic to the community last fall, and we look forward to providing more support for the communities, for this community in the future. Looking ahead to November, we will be offering a free grief event at the Wolfboro Library, open to all who have experienced loss. We remain steadfast in our mission to provide compassionate, high-quality home care and hospice services to all individuals, regardless of their financial circumstances. Your continued support makes this possible, and we are deeply grateful for the trust you place in us to care for your community. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is Public Works Department.
So we're going to start off with Public Works Administration. The Public Works Administration budget for 2026 proposed is $337,495, an increase of $153,382, or 83.3%. One of the changes in this year's budget that we tried to perform under last year's budget as well, the director's salary was previously broken up into a portion to Public Works Streets, a portion to DPW Garage, a portion to Solid Waste, and a portion to Buildings and Grounds. Prior to Steve's arrival here, when Mr. Ford was here, we broke that out so that it was a portion to the Parks Public Works Administration, and then to certain percentages of the enterprise funds. One of the things that you'll see later on this evening, as we get into the enterprise funds, you'll see a percentage of the director's salaries, which is broken out into the administrative allocations costs. So there'll be revenue coming into the general fund to pay for a portion of the director's salaries. The other item that you may recall, for a couple of years, we were without a deputy or an assistant director to Public Works. We changed the system up a little bit, and in doing so, we promoted two operations managers, one for water and sewer and one for the Public Works, highway, streets, garage, Buildings and Grounds, under the general fund. And we'd been a couple of years without one, and those funds are now captured within this budget as well. So we'll go through these. Steve will be able to answer specific questions to the budgets. And should you have questions about the shift of staffing, we can try to answer them as we move through. So 100 series is $269,114.
Jim, I have a question on why you decided to do it in this manner, because what it's really done is brought more expense to the general fund, which is the one we have to pay taxes on, and it's hard for the public to see revenue coming in. They look at expenses, so what we have done now is made the general fund larger. Yet, we haven't changed staffing or anything. It's just how we are allocating it.
Correct. There's, like you said, there's an offsetting revenue that will be seen coming from the enterprise funds in that administrative allocation. The numbers aren't terribly far off from where they have been, other than the default budget numbers. But at the end of the day, it's an offsetting revenue that pays for a portion of Steve's salary, where he oversees the water and sewer.
Dave, is it possible to get a one-page sheet that summarizes this? That shows what the salaries are, what the offsetting revenues are, so we can actually see it on one page?
Yep. I will have that for you.
Yeah, and I had problems getting the administrative allocation and 30% of his salary to come up to the number you have in the book. So it would be good that you have a full accounting of those two, and then we can probably reconcile it.
Okay. 200 series? 300 series?
What kind of surveys? Into the microphone.
Sorry. Anytime that something comes up, for instance, right now we're working on Wood Ave. Needs to be surveyed, laid out, anything along those lines that comes up, Railroad Ave. Any of those type of things comes out of this.
So do you have a list of ones you want to work on next year?
We're actively working on ones now that will probably go into next year.
Which ones are you working on now that would win the next year?
Railroad Ave, Wood Ave. We have to survey a section of North Wakefield Road as well.
I have a question. Didn't we have a survey of Railroad Avenue when we went to lay it out?
So we have a survey of that, but it needs to be finalized based on some of the historical information that was found about the railroad freight house and some of the assigned parking, is my understanding.
Correct. And then there's some lot line adjustments for the condo units. The shed, that whole area is still grayish.
But not to be argumentative, that would suggest that a survey wasn't done, because you'd nail all that stuff in a boundary line survey, property line survey.
It was before your time.
Yes.
We understand that.
It was BU, before you. What about the dock area? Are we good down at Town Docks? We got all that sorted out?
No, we have not got that sorted out yet.
Is that, because you didn't mention, is that going to be on this list of stuff, or is there more?
I would really like to be able to try to get Railroad Ave done and Wood Ave, and then tackle that dockside area. We've got to get a couple of these things finished.
Okay, so Railroad, Wood Avenue, North Wakefield Road, you're saying is on your shortlist. And then, and Town Manager's saying Town Docks. That's four of them. That probably, if we hear that you're going to be pulling surveys, we should reasonably expect that that's going to come through as the surveys you're going to be pulling.
Correct.
Is there any help we can get from the surveys that were done when the water line was installed?
No.
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 Doesn't go far.
Not sure I understand.
Well, when the water line was installed, they did a survey of downtown, but it only went...
Correct. It didn't go that far out.
It didn't go that far.
It didn't go up to Railroad Ave, and it didn't go all the way on the other side of the dockside parking lot.
So let me go back to dockside parking lot again. We have a survey of that. Am I correct?
We have a preliminary survey, which, if I remember correctly, and I'm pulling from memory here, there's some lot line adjustments that need to be finalized.
Isn't that where we left it? Isn't that where we were having issues?
I think that is correct. I think that is correct.
Again, it's before your time, so we did a survey. We identified the need to do some lot line adjustments. Is there more survey work to be done?
Let's clarify a survey. I think we have a series of surveys that were overlaid on to one another that need to be finalized and a final survey put together. There was a lot line adjustment which took place by the sidewalk, I believe.
Yes.
But we've got to get... Legal and surveyors in to ensure that the narrative that is being described in those property boundaries is in alignment with what is actually recorded. And I think there's some ambiguity there.
The reason I bring it up is, again, before your time, but minimize do-overs, do it right one time, yeah? That's the slogan, I guess. And it sounds like, at least on Town Docks, and I'm not sure about Railroad Avenue, where we are there. Okay, I got it. And then the engineering services piece, Steve?
So any engineering services, that's kind of all wrapped in. So whether it be a survey or if we need them to... For instance, we use North Wakefield Road as a good example. We have a ridge out there. That is part of the survey, and then depending on what comes out of that, what we need to do with it after that. So we've had some preliminary looks at it, but as we dig into it.
Are there any calls, you know, we've had a couple, well, at least I've heard a few conversations. Are there any calls about Class 5, Class 6 roads, boundaries, where they begin, where they end, that we need to...
That's North Wakefield.
Get a transit. Is that the only one?
So to, as far as I'm concerned, that's the only one. The one on New Garden Road is well-designated.
It is.
I believe it is. We have all the paper backup from Town Clerk, from Public Works Office of where that line is. There, if they wanted to... If somebody wanted to argue the extent of where we go, because where we have to plow to to turn a truck around, it could be some discussion with that. But I'm in no position to move a Class 5 boundary based on where we have to turn a truck around.
So your position is we're good.
We're good.
Somebody wants to argue the point, so, you know, it's...
They can come to you folks, and they can start that process, and they can do that work. But as far as we are concerned, we're well-designated. North Wakefield Road is the one that's...
Blurry.
Blurry.
400 series? 500 series? 600 series?
Just a quick question. Our, for general operating supplies, we're currently at 3,000 this year, and both Jim and you, Steve, asked for $600 for next year. Is there a reason you don't need the supplies next year?
3,000?
Fine, thanks.
One minute, Brian. No, we should be in decent shape with, based off of what we bought this year. What that, we boiled that down basically to shirts that cover he and I. Josh has his out-of-the-water fund. We are stripping most of this down as far as we can.
And that's in alignment with what union staff receives?
Correct. Just took me a second to flip back to my note.
600 series? 800 series? Okay, your next budget is DPW Streets and Highways. The DPW Streets and Highway budget for 2026, proposed budget, $1,761,775, an increase of $259,977, or 17.3%. Steve will be able to answer questions that you have about this as we go forward. This basically boils down to the meat and potatoes of plowing roads, grading roads, maintaining roads, et cetera. So 100 series?
Yeah, I have a question. Is there any added staff in this budget? Because I'm, Steve would have come out of here, Steve Petchy, right? You filled his position. Is there any other, because it's 72,000, or is it just...
We have one open position right now. We have, so we had filled Steve's spot. We've had our normal rollover, what I consider our rollover. We have one open position now. We had a gentleman move to Florida. Mikey left the end of September. So we just, we were froze, and then we just advertised, started advertising last week.
The other reason why this is up, Linda, is the default budget from 2025, or excuse me, the 2025 budget, the raises for the union staff was in the standalone warrant article. So this is raises for the 10 staff? Is that the number? Is really two years' worth of raises, based on that warrant article.
That's what I was looking for.
200 series? 300 series?
Yep, road striping.
Well, so all, most of these, most of these on the 380 line, I would presume that you have an itemized list of those areas that you're going to do. And I presume, I presume, I would recommend that you publish those, and then when you come back, you chop them off. Because people are going to ask the question, how come I can't get my white fog line in your, whatever? How come I can't get my double yellow line, or how come I can't get my parking and crosswalk? If you already have those identified, it would be really helpful to tee them all up.
So I guess my question is, that's why it's in here like this? You mean more so than this? Because, so this is based off of what we proposed to do. If we go to default again, all of this, and we have to start from scratch. So for example, let's use striping, since that's been a topic for the last week-ish.
Or two.
Or two. We didn't stripe in '25 because we were into default. If we go to default in '26, we're going to have to stripe, which means the money that we used this year for potholes, mowing, gravel, whatever it might be, is going to have to be reallocated to striping, which means we won't have it for that. So over the last two years in default, we've lost a half a million dollars of maintenance. That's a lot. So something, as we do this, and we keep, and that budget keeps shrinking, the costs keep escalating. So something has to change somewhere. We've identified striping is going to have to be a priority for '26. And then we will do that, and then reshuffle the deck again, like we did this year.
So is that parking lot striping?
Parking lot striping, road striping, crosswalks, that's everything, yes. All of the town parking lots, all of the roads. Crosswalks we did this year, we did that for a safety reason. We opted not to do the others. The only line striking that got done in this town was to do with the construction project. We didn't do anything else. There was a couple on Lane Street that were attached to the Lane Street pump station, same difference. We didn't do any others.
And if I understand correctly, the catch basins were cleaned in the spring.
Correct.
We had, and if we had had a very, very harsh summer with lots of rainstorms, you would have had to move money around to do them again. But we got very lucky this summer, and there was virtually no thunderstorms. And so the catch basins, I assume, are in pretty good condition right now.
As good as they can be, yes. I mean, again, it's a, we have to pick and choose where we're at. We have to make sure that we have enough money if we get snow in November, and what we have for three-quarter piles are gone before the end of the year. We have to have enough money to replenish them. We can't just say, well, we can't do anything till the first of the year. So we have to be able to keep enough money in reserve to still be able to operate.
So what about street sweeping?
Yep. So we have done that. We continued that all the way through, like we've been doing all downtown and all the areas, until we did the budget freeze. Some three weeks ago, we stopped. We usually carry that through till Columbus Day. We stopped three weeks early.
So did you get town roads?
So we did town roads as well. We have a tow behind sweeper. We did as many of those. We'll go out now. We'll do, now the leaves are dropping. We still have to do it again. You know, it's a, that's a constant thing. Like downtown, we do once a week. We do the outskirts of town and roads as we can. We have to blow leaves off this fall. We have to vacuum in the ditches.
So do you do all-town roads sweep?
We try to do all-town roads, yes. We have a list, and the guys go down through them to do. Obviously, we don't do the dirt roads, but as many as possible. And they get triaged too, John. You know what I mean? It's between Steve and I, we run every road every week. And then the foreman does obviously more often, plus the guys. So it's a, hey, look, we need to do this road.
So do you have a ring where you get close to the lake, and then you do outside, and then you get further out? Do you prioritize areas near the lake?
Yes. And also, based, you know, try to take into account traffic count, all those things. Safety in general, you know, the extent of the road is just a little bit of sand that's out on the fog line, or is it a total mess on the corners, or, you know, however, whatever. As many as we can. We usually have a guy runs around with that drag behind sweeper at least once a week. You know, or if it's, we get a rainy day, which we didn't have many this year, but...
So that's not outside services where the unit comes in?
We don't do that. We haven't, I haven't hired an outside sweeper since I've been here. That's why we bought the pickup room for the loader, so we could keep that all internal. And that loader paid for itself the first year we had it. So that's what you see, or you guys don't see it because it's early, but that's the one that goes out at 4:00 AM and does everything dockside and everything, its whole block.
So that's yours?
That's ours, yeah.
Yeah, it was about five or six years ago that we had one company coming from Londonderry that, they were the only ones that were coming up, and they just didn't even want to come anymore.
I have a question. In outside services, is there anything new? Or is this all been there before, and we're just looking at the change between 2023 costs and 2026 costs?
I haven't added anything to this since my time here. You know, when I got here in '23, the plowing of North Wakefield Road was $4,000, for example. The road striping was like $8,000 total. So it's drastically changed in three years.
The only addition would be the no parking zones painting.
I'm going to ask you something. If you had to get, lose something or two things out of here, which are the last two on your list?
Two?
Yep.
The guardrails.
Okay.
And the spraying of invasive species.
Thank you.
Hi, Dave. So two things. One, I heard, which is disappointing. It's not because, you basically said, I'm just copying over what I did two years ago.
Well, it's not copying over. That's the services that we hire.
There's no, but Linda asked you the question, are you going to do any net new stuff? And the answer was no.
Well, I haven't been able to do even the old stuff I want to do for the last two.
That's disturbing, because that, you know, that tells me we're losing, we're losing ground.
Absolutely.
Personal opinion, we're losing ground.
I agree with that 100%.
And that's, that's, that, enough said on that point. The second thing is, these items, road striping, fog, yellow, these are projects, and, you know, to be direct and not disrespectful to you. You and John and others, you were describing how it all works. I recommend that you tell us what specifically the ones you're going to do, so that, you know, when you get back here in front of the public and us, you know, on a, whatever the frequency is, you can say, I was, I'm going to pick on the nuisance be... No, I'm not going to do the nuisance beaver renewal. I, you know, I had pavement crack sealing that I had to do on these five roads that I identified at the beginning of the year. I am two roads in, and I am three roads. I'm on schedule. So that folks can't, can't sit at home and say, I don't understand what they're doing, and I want to push to the front of the line too. Everybody's going to want to push to the front of the line. But this stuff here is a great aggravator. This stuff here, if we don't do more than what we've done in the prior years, to me, is a problem. It's a great, it's a problem for the town. So those are my two pieces of advice for you. Thank you.
400 series?
It is a little difficult to do more with less money, though, isn't it?
Well, you'd put more money in. Make choices.
Two pages of 400 series?
400 series, 440, part of the road money, and it's a vibrating roller? So is that now, you're going to do it out of the warrant article, or is it...
I split it, which is what I've been doing anyway. So if we are doing, if we're rebuilding a dirt road with road money, then I have the roller that I'm using on that. Our normal grading maintenance is what comes out of this piece. So I split it, because we use it 50, about 50/50.
About half 50/50. Okay, thank you. And again, with 490, we're again looking at just the cost increase in pricing. There's nothing new that's causing that. Thank you.
Nope, and that is state bid pricing as well.
It's what's due?
State bid. It's state bid pricing.
And is this contemplating, if I could, Dave, sorry? Is this contemplating the new contract that you talked to us about a few weeks ago?
Yes, because in this particular instance, when I need state bid, that is set regardless of what vendor we buy it from. That is... Um, that is, this is what the footage price is, will be for next year, so.
Got it.
Thank you.
600 series.
So, um, give me a, a walk through this. I see that 634 Maintenance Supplies Roads previously was in 630.
So that, that was pulled out before my time too, Brian. So that's, that's just been like, written like that for three years, I think probably.
Okay.
Maybe because we keep going default, I don't know. Um, so what I can tell you is that previously, all of these were in the 630 line. So it was just one big thing for whether it be road salt, gravel, stone, whatever. So this got split, I don't know, in '22 maybe? It was split my, at least my first year of looking at the budget.
22 or 23, I don't, I think it was 23.
So, or that proposed for '23.
So we have our snow and ice stuff.
Yep.
We have our, um, just for paving, potholes, things like that. And then you have, um, more, the other stuff is, um, gravel for, for gravel roads.
Correct.
So you break into three pieces. And all of them have escalated tremendously, haven't they?
Of course, yes. Well, I, I don't know if I would say tremendously per se. I mean, it's been, it's been three years. So it's, 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 it goes up about the same percentage as the loaf of bread did. I mean, it's comparable.
So let's talk quality of product.
Sure.
So in Ospey, they're mixing all of the sand with their gravel. And in another place in, uh, on the outskirts of Wolfboro, uh, their, their product is, is a kind of marginal also. So where are you finding the best product?
So there's two parts to that, John. One, um, we put our gravel out to bid. So, um, in previous years, I'm not gonna say who won the bid this year because I haven't, we haven't finalized that yet. In previous years, higher sand and gravel has won it. Um, they do have to submit on it. So it is spec gravel and it is low bid. So those are the two things that we look for. You can buy, they, they happen to, to check both of those boxes, plus availability and everything else.
So when you buy the gravel, are you stocking it?
So I, I try to, so for the last three years, um, I have tried to build up a stockpile of about, I would say we have between 600 and 700 yards right now in a pile. Um, and I've been trying to get that to 1,000 yards. Um, one good, bad storm wiped that out. My first year, we had nothing. And we had to beg, borrow and steal to put some of the roads back together. That December storm we had in '22, um, which was, I was three or four months in. We had nothing. So I've been trying to build that up. Uh, this summer, we bought some, uh, stone base from a, actually from out back of, um, Hermann Hill. When they were blasting that, that contractor approached us. Uh, he submitted state spec stone base gravel. So we bought quite a bit of that. I think we bought 3,000 yards of that from him.
So, uh, the quality of the material again, are you improving the quality of the gravel by adding more rock to it in, at home base to, uh, remove, uh, the, the, the sand and the, and the sediment mixture there? Because, uh, obviously if you, if you do that, we have, we have less runoff with, uh, sediments.
Correct, but we still have to put down spec gravel based on how we are set. So it has to be a state spec gravel. I can't just mix up my own mixture as much as I would sometimes like to.
Who guarantees that when you buy gravel that it meets spec?
They give me a sheet that it's tested.
It's tested by?
Tested by an independent, an independent testing agency that says it's this. You know, that's the same as any construction projects. When they did the ones out here, they had to submit on their material. That's a common practice to do.
It's like if you do concrete, you get a slump test.
A slump test, you know, you know, you do a sieve analysis on the gravel to make sure it meets spec. So you can have a gravel spec or you can have a stone base spec. Um, either or is acceptable for roads in New Hampshire.
Mm-hmm.
So, so Brian, you might meet the spec, but you can actually improve the quality of product by adding more rock to the product, which will stick around more and pack in more.
As long as you stay within the spec.
Yeah.
John, yes.
And you can also, I'm sure, buy different grades of gravel. And one grade of gravel might work better for a road base than another grade of gravel.
So you wanna caution that a bit. So there's a reason why the specs are what the specs are and the specs give you a range. And the, and the majority of the range is, is based on the fine, fine counts, which is all the, the fine particles in that. If you go with a stone base material, that is what that is. That's blasted ledge, things like that. If you go with a gravel base, that's what that is, is a gravel base. When sewer crusher, big rocks become small rocks. So there is more gravel in it versus a stone base, which is like a stoned dust base, to John's point. So we use both. I would love to use stone base everywhere. We can't afford stone base. That is two times as much money as what we have in the budget now. So when we can get a road good and we can then get it paved, it becomes less of an issue.
Mm-hmm.
So we tried to, when, when I was approached with the stone base that we could purchase, we jumped on that because it was, it was offered to us at a very good price.
So I'm just trying to get that out there to the community so they understand. I mean, there is a, there is a difference in, in the cost. We could, we could, we could increase our cost to get a better product, but we're, we're actually, we're kind of boxed in a little bit.
Correct.
So you could use, um, stone base product where you know you have, um, slopes, drainage issues, runoff.
Well, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna have a pile for that and building a road. You don't want to build a road, this section, because it's flat, we use gravel. Then we move to this section, that's hilly, and we use stone base. You want to have a consistent product, whatever it is that you're building, whether, pick one and build the road out of that. You don't want to have multiple materials of different changes in there because that's why your road's dusty.
Yeah, wavy, gravy.
You need to have consistency. So we, we got that stone base, we redid a road with a stone base. We did, we did Beach Pond with the stone base, that whole section. So that's all, that piece that was just paved has all the same material underneath it, which means it will, it will heave at the same.
So what he's talking about is the, the fine particles in the winter time, those freeze and, and the consistency of all those particles freezing at once, raising lift uniformly.
What happens when you see, if you drive roads that have culverts on them and, you know, in the summertime it's smooth, you see the patch. In the wintertime you go and you drop down because somebody replaced that culvert or did a water patch or whatever it is anywhere. And they, they took all the existing material out and put new, something new back in, which sounds great except for it doesn't make the road uniform anymore. And you don't get the same settlement, you don't get the same.
I think we have the perpetual, a perpetual one of those just before the Abenaki, uh, pop away, ice arena, you can't even weather.
Yeah, there's one there, yeah.
Thank you for the, uh, the tutorial on stone base. Appreciate it.
Anything else on the 600s? 700 series? 800 series? Okay, your next budget is DPW Garage. Um, DPW Public Works Garage, 2026 proposed budget, $270,622, an increase of $16,575 or 6.5%. 100 series? 200 series? 300 series? 400 series?
Let me go back to the 300, 332. And this is, we, we get revenue back for this?
So.
Am I understanding it, we're getting reimbursed or it's just coming out of another department and going back? Are we, I'm just trying to figure out whether we had the expense twice.
So it comes from, it, we bill each individual department, whether it be MED, police, fire, highway, comes out of that. So this, this buys everything. And then every month we send the bills out to each individual department. They do.
Check to you.
Yes, I'm sorry, it's a line transfer, is it?
So we, we'll pick this up in our revenue? So Public Works has a revenue line?
No, it's expensive.
I don't think it's a revenue line. I think it's just a line item transfer. So at the end of the year, it balances out. I, is how I understand it.
My understanding is exactly that. Rev, uh, the cost of buying this DEF fluid, vehicle comes in from another department, you pump it up. Whatever the volume is, you charge them exactly $5,000 divided by the number of gallons of DEF fluid that went into that vehicle. So you don't take a margin on any of that stuff. You're not running a little business here.
No.
And that goes over as a bill to the other organization. And that other organization files a, an expense report to pay off that bill.
So I.
Dollar for dollar.
So, so in terms of expenses in this book, in the budget, it's in twice. It's in here, we're paying for it, and it's in the department that pays this. So it's in twice.
It's the same question, kind of, that I have with the.
So the, but the, but the revenue, there's no revenue to offset it. It's a double expense.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get.
So, yes and no. I, I, just a little bit more on that. So not everything that the garage does is built. For example, there's some things that are built into, which is why there's $28,000 in here at all times. You know, um, if, if my Public Works truck goes in for an oil change, that's kind of, that's figured in on that $28,000. If Barry's truck goes in, it's if Barry's truck needs brakes. It, that's above and beyond routine maintenance, which is why there's always $28,000 or what used to be 23 is now 28 because the cost of those oils have gone up. Anything above and beyond that. So for example, you know, whatever that total would be right now is quite a bit higher. It carries a balance, for example, until everything gets balanced out at the end of the year. So it's not a, it's not a zero budget. There's always money that we need there.
Okay.
Just to clarify.
See, the aberrant of that would be that somebody sets up a little profit and loss operation and charges revenue for the service. That, that would be the aberrant of that.
Well, you could do that, but all you're doing is basically charging back yourself.
As I say, it's, it's an aberrant kind of thing to do, setting up your little business inside of the business and then having crust. It's crazy, I, I shouldn't say. It's not an idea that I think would be good. If the question is, are we, are we double hitting the accounts? I don't think we are.
I'm saying with the bottom line of the budget's gonna be increased by that, by, because you have it as an expense here and you have it in expense in the police department budget for what, they use the oil?
No, because, uh, I can't, let me just speak to the budgets that I see. So let's use straight highways, for example.
Yeah.
So highways maintenance budget of 150, 155 that I proposed, that, all of that 155 runs through this garage. But there isn't, so the, there's 28,000 that is spread amongst the whole town to use for normal everyday things.
You're saying this is just the, to have stock?
Correct. That is just stock. So it's not double dipped, it's not 150 for highway and.
Inventory.
Inventory.
Inventory, okay, I got it. Yep.
Good.
I do too.
So you said that you have 28 for inventory for materials here. If a police vehicle were to come over here and need to use some of your, um, DEF fluid, they would get it?
So they get, they get oil changes, they get service work. Like, that's part of us having our own maintenance department.
Correct.
If the, if the cruiser needs brakes, if the cruiser needs tires, the cruiser needs windshield wipers.
Outside services.
That's not outside services. That gets built. So we will buy tires, we will buy brakes, and then at the end of the month, Bill writes, I mean, uh, Ben writes a bill and it gets submitted in and then we bill, we bill. We bill Sam. And then they put the money where it needs to be.
400 series? 600 series? 700 series?
Question? So each year, if I re, excuse me. In '25, for line 740, you had a $9,000 expense and you're proposing a 5,500. Is that that the software went down or you only had to buy it once or what's the?
So, um, we removed the AC machine and the tire machine from the ASCS.
So that's, that was the town manager removal. Now, okay, so now back to the 3,500, it's 3,500 bucks a year for software to diagnose every year?
Uh-huh.
Wow.
Uh-huh. We don't turn keys without that software though.
No, I, I got it. That's a, that's a, that's a, it's a good business. This is all diesel stuff?
No, it's not just diesel. It's the regular cruisers.
Diesels.
Cruisers, pickups, yeah. Parks and Recs minivan. Anything that needs, everything needs.
Is it more than just the engine? Is it, is it?
Emissions, it's.
It's emissions.
Plug it in.
It's an OBD-2 kind of thing?
Well, I mean, the handheld readers every time there's a code for anything.
Pretty expensive, okay?
Yeah, thank you. The diesels are by far worse with the way that the DEF system and the emissions are. It's horrendous.
On, on 720, new door, entry doors were removed. Was that moved to capital outlay?
Yes.
So what is the minimum amount for a capital outlay? I thought at a, at a point we had like 10,000 and above. And I didn't have time, I started to say, okay, now where is that written? Because what happens is, if your budget's too high, you just take it in capital outlay. And I thought we had had this before and we had kind of come to a price. And my feeling was it was 10,000. But I, I couldn't lay my hands on it when I was thinking about it and figuring out where I'd go look for it.
I, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't either. But Linda's right, I mean, you could, and I'm not suggesting you do, but you could say, you know, I got a thousand dollar capital outlay.
Well.
There's gotta be some threshold above which you go, that's a meaningful material outlay and therefore should be as a capital outlay.
Yeah, and the rest of it is just your operating. Yeah, so. I thought that was a number, but.
We made it up.
Oh, I like to do that quite often.
800 series? Okay, your next budget is solid waste. Um, solid waste budget for 2026, $1,182,773, increase of $10,806 or 0.88% over 2025. Steve will be able to speak to this. Uh, 100 series?
Why the decrease? What caused the decrease?
In the salaries?
Yeah.
Mine isn't in there anymore.
That, that's all you?
You're not in there.
I'm not there. I've been moved to the admin.
Okay. And I, I have another question. Have, when was the last time we raised our, um, transfer station fees?
So we did that, uh, last year.
Last year.
Was last year?
This past year, this past year.
2024 or 2023?
We did it to beginning of '25.
We did in the beginning of '25.
Yeah, it was, it was to go into effect.
Wait a minute.
It was to go into effect the beginning of '25, if I remember correctly.
Yes, because.
We presented it in '24 to go into effect in '25.
I thought the dump stickers have been raised for two years now.
Dump stickers were. Dump stickers we did first, then we did, we did, um, the actual like tipping fees for dumpsters and things like that.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the big increase.
Yep.
Which is being forced on us. That's why I was asking when the last time.
So we are in the last year of our contract. And for '26, we had one more option year. We've exercised that option. year. We've exercised that option to go. We are then going to have to go out to bid. And that's when we get those numbers in before budget season, before a year from now. Then we will know, and we'll be able to look at that and say, this is what we're going to have to have. We're going to have to now adjust our rates accordingly based on that. Or I'm going to propose we adjust our rates accordingly based on what our contract is going to have to be. You know, we have some things in flux, like propose some different options.
So you're talking about dumping fees, because I had a conversation with Steve up there, and he said that we, we increased our, our construction fee costs because people from other towns had residency in our town, and they were using ours, and we were paying more to get rid of the product. And now he sees less people because we've raised our costs.
Correct. So our tonnage exported has dropped drastically from what it used to be, and now we are more balanced between, what it used to be is, we were paying to get rid of, you know, it was costing us almost $1,000 a can to get rid of that stuff, because we weren't charging enough. So we balanced that out. And by doing so, it, it made it more of where, in line where it should be. So people are not going to drive from different towns to dump here. It's not worth it anymore. So they dump in their own place. And then that's balanced out. So our tonnage has come down, and our revenue stream goes back up.
How often do we have a new contract? How many years?
I, when I, this will be my, I'm going on my fourth year here. So this, I had two option years. I, I inherited a contract, I inherited a three-year contract from Dave, and then with two option years that we, we built in. So '26 will be.
So we can look at that, we should be, instead of waiting the long period that we did last time, adjusting our fees on a five-year basis, or if we redo the contract in four years, a four-year basis?
Well, so we know, we know what the rates are. So I've known 5% of raise, of raising what these, what this stuff is going to cost us. So when we looked at our rates, we built that in accordingly, so that we'd be okay, knowing that in '26, when our full contract is up, what we've been paying is going to go, it's going to be a whole different system than what we have now. We've had plenty of conversations with different haulers, and we get an idea of what we're walking into.
So the citizens can understand that on a contract year, when we have an increase in our contract, we will have to pass on some of the expenses to them, because.
Well, ultimately, they have to pay it anyway.
Correct.
So whether they pay it individually at the dump, or they pay it.
Pay it in their taxes.
They pay it in their taxes. They're paying the bill.
Well, I think with the construction, that it, it isn't that way.
No.
You get it, if you are having construction, then you're paying.
I think it is much better to make the facility charge the money versus putting it here, because then at least it's the people that use the facility that are covering that cost.
So do we know what percentage of the expenses are covered by our fees?
I have that. I just don't have that right in front of me.
Will you give it to me? I'd just be interested.
I'd like to see.
Yeah, we should all get it.
Just the sum total of all the dump stickers divided by the cost that we have.
We have a full, we have a sheet that we update every month internally for that. Yep. And it shows what our recycle revenue is, what our, you know, dumpster fees. It's, yeah, yep, I can get that to you.
It would be nice, and it would be nice to be part of the budget, because then it will also, the budget committee will have an idea how much revenue. So that would be nice to have.
Could I get back to 311? Just to make sure I understand. So this is, these are monitoring wells on Wickers as well as at the site. That's going to go on and kind of like forever, right?
Correct.
And that, that, that 11%, that, that's kind of like they just mail us in a bill and says it costs you 11% year over year?
Yes.
12% or whatever the number is.
So is there any organization that would sub out so that they could buy the gas that comes out of the landfill?
No, I don't. I don't believe so, John. I don't think there's enough that comes out of that to make that.
You mean methane, John?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe that's set up for that, to be that way. You know, like a turnkey type of setup. It's not. I don't believe it's that, would be that profitable to do that.
So the largest dump area that I've seen with methane coming out of it is on the Chelmsford Lowell Line in an area called Drum Hill. And they actually have stainless steel looking, no, pipes that go into the ground that are lit on fire, and they burn as torches to burn off the methane.
Yeah, and turnkey does it. They, they still pipe to UNH. So I mean, it's, it's, it's a thing. I just don't think that's a big enough thing.
Just thought I'd ask.
And just one, on the, this is just a kind of a future-looking question. So we, we read here that more and more intermediate sites, we haul to somebody, somebody hauls to somebody else. Those intermediate sites are closing or being more specialized? Is that a trend?
Well, there's only so many.
If you want to take nasty stuff, you're going to take it to another state, I think.
Yes, but we don't, we don't take in nasty stuff. We just take in household trash and construction demolition. So we're not dealing with hazardous. What we have for hazardous is done differently. You know, that's a separate entity now. So the, the overall mass solid waste, the MSW, is you can take it to Belmont.
Anvers.
You can take it to Rochester. For us, it's those two. You know, obviously, we are not set up to haul our own. At the moment, we are not set up to haul our own waste. That is somewhere I want to get to.
Are more landfill sites, intermediary sites, are they closing?
Not to my knowledge. They're looking to build more.
Okay. Thank you.
So the, actually. Is trash barrel pickup, is that, is that 300?
Outside services?
No, well.
380, last line.
Yeah, so to that point, so we have the trash barrels at downtown and Cape Park, and I saw a few of them up there to dump up there. It's all waste facility with Steve, and he talked about, you know, they're starting to lose their life expectancy because they were a certain construction type, and want to try to get something into the program for the future to replace those. So I didn't see it on here, but I didn't know how, if, how we could go about that.
610. It's a line item 610. It's four of them in there. So I, I keep four of them in there to replace every year.
Okay. So is there a, you, you would be buying those, then?
Yes, we buy those.
Yeah.
Yep. So this, this trash barrel pickup is the actual picking up of the trash, nothing to do with purchasing barrels.
I'll wait till we get to 610.
500 series.
Okay, 610. So those are, you have a supplier or something, and we're going to uniformly have?
Buy those locally. We've been looking at other options. One of my winter plans, a few things that I want to bring before you guys to kind of make some decisions on or pick things, that is one of them, of kind of changing what that is, and give you some options to, for that.
So those four are the ones that are being made for us?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah. So obviously, those wouldn't even be purchased or anything until after March. So I will, my, my plan is January, sometime when we get that little bit of the lull in between, I can, I'm going to come in with a few things and say, this is what we're looking to do. If, if everything goes well, we get money. Here's three options. What do you guys like? What do you want to do? And then you pick. And then that's what we'll do. So maybe it's the same thing, maybe it's some metal ones, maybe it's some different decorative ones. I, I've got some options.
That is the solid waste budget. Your next budget is buildings and grounds. 2026 proposed budget, $238,367, an increase of $30,310 or 14.57% over 2025. And your 100 series. 300 series.
What is a 311? What is 311?
So we want to, that boat ramp is getting bad, so we'd like to work on getting that permitted and planned.
This is for Back Bay docks.
Yeah, sorry, Back Bay docks.
Ibeen Park.
Correct.
And the boat, it says boat ramp would be part of that hole?
Yes.
We should look at that, because that was one of the areas in the Wolfboro Bay watershed plan, and that we can make the changes that they saw there.
Yep.
Do you have that?
I do.
I'm not sure I understand what that is, Linda.
We did a Wolfboro Bay, or Winnipeg Association did a Wolfboro Bay watershed management plan, and there were key areas. And the railroad station ramp was one of them, and they put it out and told us what we could do to make it more environmentally correct, or we could get rid of some of the pollution that goes in there by making this change. And that's why I asked whether Steve had that.
So what environmentally would we, improving there?
Is the ramp going down, and the way the water runs on down into the, right into the water there from the parking lot, and it lays out, I'll show you. It is in the plan, and it.
Got the drain there, I believe, that goes into, to divert the water into the garden area.
Yeah.
Filtered to go back in.
So I was, I had this conversation with one of your gentlemen there that had done all the excavation down there, and he informed me that under Dave Ford, there's underground tanks there that take all the water from the parking lot and distribute to.
The rain guard.
Underground areas in there.
There's no plan anywhere that says.
There is, there is no plan. He said he was, he was instructed by Dave Ford to put these in the, in the, in the parking lot there. There's septic tanks, the holding tanks that are in the ground there that are, that have water dispersment systems.
Let me, so let me just back up here, because I asked the question. So line 311 says engineering services, boat ramp, and back bay docks for a sum of $10,000. And I said, what is it? And it went, is it A, a drainage capability that has been identified, or is it to design a replacement for the Wolfboro Back Bay docks and for the boat ramp?
That's what it is. It will take that.
So it is not A, and it's not what John said, which is B prime?
But it does incorporate.
And it considers what Linda's talking about.
Takes that, puts that together. I have no idea what you're talking about, John.
But this is to put a design together for those docks. Is that right?
I worked on the train station down there before I came to work for the town. So I, these guys have been here for 10 years.
It was well before your time, is what I was told.
But these guys have both been here for 10 years, and they're, we're all three of us look at each other. So it must be dog, is, I'm assuming who you're talking to. But there's no covers down there, there's no, nothing. So if there's tanks buried underground, that's.
News to you.
News to all of us.
And they, wouldn't you need to have them accessible so you could clean them out?
That's my question. So I would, I would respectfully say, let's just pump the brakes on that in case there's some confusion someplace, and I can, I'll look into that, and I'll get back to you.
Can you help my back? Because there's a broken concrete bollard there that I lifted up twice this summer and stuck back on top. Can we, when we're doing that, move some of those, not concrete, those granite bollards so that when boats back in, they don't knock them over?
Well, the whole point of the bollards are there so that you don't back into them, Brian.
Yeah, but they're too close to the edge.
No, no, they're not.
I had, I had two tourists help me this summer, two different tourists.
No.
Help me pick it up and stick it back on top. Do you know what I'm talking about that's broken off?
I do, and if people wouldn't hit them, they wouldn't break. They're, they're there specifically because if you move them out, all they're going to do is hit them wider. Okay? They need to learn how to back into the space given to them.
I stirred the pot here. I just wanted to know what that line was all about. Now we're, now we're fixing his back.
Yeah, yeah.
But it is the engineering for that ramp. And then they are going to take the, the Wolfboro Bay watershed management plan into consideration and give it to the engineer.
And it's also for the, for those docks?
Docks, yes.
So the, what we'll get is a deliverable, including what selectman, selectwoman Murray said is, consideration of that, we're going to call it for my word, a drainage thing, but we're also going to get a design to replace the docks.
We're going to get an evaluation on the docks. What this is, is exactly what we did.
An evaluation on the docks.
On mass landing two years ago. We, we went to mass landing, we did the same thing. We then got a grant to replace everything.
So I know this is a terrible thing to ask, but could we just cut to the chase and say, let's not just have somebody say they, they're in rough shape. I was going to use a bad word with an S. Can we just cut to the, to the chase and say, they have to be replaced or they don't. If they need to be replaced, here's what you got to do.
That's the evaluation.
That's the evaluation.
That's the evaluation.
And what that is, is a.
This is not going to engineer replacements. This is going to come in, look at the docks, say, this is the condition of the docks, our existing conditions, and then from that point, we, do we have a capital project that we have to tackle?
And for a different conversation at a much different time, are we accruing money to, are we salting away money to?
No.
No. Okey dokey. That's good to know.
That's right.
Not a nickel.
So this will be.
No, we didn't have a capital reserve fund.
A study of the condition of the docks, and eventually a treasure hunt to find.
Well, again, I will repeat what I said. We, we did the same thing two years ago for mass landing. I went out, we got a grant for 100% of the work, and rebuilt the ramp and fixed the docks. And it didn't cost us anything other than this fee.
And eventually, we're going to end up doing the same thing, I hope, over at the town docks, catching all the water that runs into there, and.
We, we have, we have, we are working, we have a concept for that as well.
Right after you fix the parking.
And we have a grant for that as well.
If it's still there.
If it's still there.
Yes.
Right. We're trying, folks. We're trying.
Yep.
So Steve, on the other 300, on the 380 line?
Yeah.
Is this, is this, you know, to Linda's indelicate question earlier, is this just simply, let's just keep doing what we're doing, albeit at a higher price?
Well, these are the services that we have to provide.
I understand. Is it, we just keep doing the same stuff we're doing, albeit at a higher price?
Yeah, I think we, we are going to, I don't know whether we need any more janitorial service for the railroad station. Is that what you're asking?
No, 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 no.
I guess I don't quite follow, because.
What I'm trying to get to is, I, it's unfair, I know, but here it comes. It feels like this is a tread water, tides rising budget.
Well.
Let's tread water, but the tide's going up. And, and what was asked earlier, Linda asked it, is, you know, is, is the, is the cost that you plan to expend, are they just the same you've always done? No net new costs, no net new projects, whatever the right word is. But they just cost more? Is that, is the answer to that, yes?
The answer on this particular, what you're asking to is yes. We haven't added, we haven't added any more janitorial services. It just costs more to clean the toilet.
Okay.
Unless, and we, have you heard a need for more janitorial service?
No, 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 no.
Okay, I just wanted to.
I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, are we, are we, are we taking the, are we making the right bets to get ahead of the curve, as opposed to treading water, cost us more money, just to stay even? And if the answer is we're staying even, I'm okay with that at the moment. Not really.
I've been, we've been trying for three years to stay even. We're, we're going backwards, as I said before, so.
You're not staying. You're actually losing.
There's one that I just have to ask. Just curious what three benches are.
So we, so we have, we have town benches, and we rebuild them each winter.
Okay.
Yeah, we take one, two, three of them back, either paint them, strip them, redo the wood.
Okay.
Pickney tables.
How many total benches do we have?
You had to ask me all.
Dun, 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 dun.
You have some. You have some, and so does Park and Rec.
Yeah. So it's somewhere between seven to nine.
Okay.
That's an unfair quiz question. You retract it.
So three benches a year, every three years, they're all new?
And.
And they get used a lot and they're out in the weather and blah, blah, blah.
So where are they?
Jim, on three eighty, you remove mowing, public safety and library grounds. Where did that go to?
I did that at the recommendation of Steve and he'll be able to explain that. Steve?
So what we're, we're looking to do, and you'll see that further down on the list, is we're gonna buy, we're gonna buy a new mower. The water department is gonna buy a new mower. And what we're gonna end up doing is sharing that between buildings and grounds and the water department and we wanna mow that ourselves. That eighty-five hundred, instead of paying that to outside services to, to farm out, we want to keep that in-house now. Try to do it in-house.
Great. I like it. And it would be nice if you had it written here saying, we are going to mow ourselves therefore. So this is not exactly what they've done before. They've done something different. No, they've moved it somewhere else and purchased them and purchased a, a machine. That's right. There you go. You got it.
In, in our manpower and how we have changed around our, our setup, let's say.
Okay.
I think with the, with the ability of me taking the whole group between water sewer and all of public works allows me to, yes, we have enterprise funds, yes, we have lines. I get, I understand all that. But it also allows us to look at this a little bit differently. With Josh coming up out of the union into management, it creates different positions. Same thing with Steve. So it's allowing us to do some things a little bit differently with manpower than we weren't able to do in the past, with the exception of the one open spot, who are actually fully staffed. In the first of the year, we'll have another water opening. But we've been quasi decent at being able to hire folks. So what we're identifying is we're able to get to some more of this maintenance stuff ourselves, which is what my goal has been since I've been here, which is trying to get more of the maintenance work done, done ourselves. The things we can do, things we can't do, we will sub out.
And this is something that used to be done by Paxton Rec. Paxton Rec, when they took on the cemetery responsibility, could not continue with the library and public safety. It got farmed out and Steve came forward with this proposal and it seemed like a win-win. So we can get you better narrative.
Yeah, a better narrative because I, I think it's a good idea if, it's really a savings of money to do it in-house. I have no problem, but.
You know, short term, because we do need to, we need to purchase something, but it's already in Josh's plan to purchase anyway. So what that's just gonna do is allow us to kind of cost share between the departments, which is what we've been, we did that with the excavator. We've done that with the skid steer. So that works well. Like I said, with, with all of that stuff falling under my umbrella, it makes it a little easier to, to navigate all of that stuff.
We need one instead of two.
So let's talk about labor then on that. So are you gonna allocate one person?
So what we will do is, we are, we haven't finalized this plan, John, so don't hold me to this, but what our working plan is going to be is to basically take a water guy and a highway guy and have them mow. So if they doing it together, so they can, they can mow waters things together, they can mow public works things together. So the cost sharing, right? So we can keep those pots separate, enterprise fund, non-enterprise fund. We don't like to send people out like that mowing on their own. It's a safety issue. So by doing that, we've inherited a trailer from the fire department that we can house all of our mowing in capacities in. We have a truck, we have the stuff, we're gonna have the manpower so we can send out a two-man crew to, to mow the public safety building, library, Josh's plant. We whack around the hydrants, the pump stations, those things. And then if it's, say we get a, you know, intermittent rainy season and we start getting heavy stuff, then we can allocate more manpower to mow accordingly.
So I'm just trying to understand if you have eighty-five dollars, eighty-five hundred dollars that you pay out or you, I'm just gonna use this as a figure, say you have a fifty thousand dollar person that you pay plus benefits, that, that's what I'm trying to understand.
I'm not adding anybody to do this. We're just gonna reallocate what they already do.
He's not asking that.
So.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just doing an observation to say, okay, if you're paying eighty-five hundred and, or you're, or you're using a man for, I'm just using the number of fifty grand for a salary for the year or, or it's half a year, then how does that math look on paper?
Oh, well, so when you mow once a week, it's not a, you know, and if you have a guy who's making fifty and that's, and you split that up fifty-two weeks even still, it's, I, I understand where you're trying to go with that, is whether or not it's actually cheaper to swab it out or to do it. Because we need to do mowing at our water plant anyway, we feel that is the more cost-effective way to do that and reallocate the manpower accordingly. That answers the question.
Yep. What thirty-five? In as brief as possible, what repairs are we doing at each of those buildings?
Okay. Well, the railroad station in Dockside, especially railroad station bathrooms are a constant issue. We have two toilets that need to be replaced in the train station alone. They are homeowner toilets now. They're constantly broken. We need to upgrade those to commercial grade. We have one urinal that has been out of commission for three weeks now. We're probably gonna have to replace that. We're trying to redo the gaps in that to get us through. That's plumbing, painting, there's constant painting between the two buildings as well. We, we had most of Dockside done in twenty-four. There's a backside that needs to be touched up. The railroad station has pieces that, that need to be done. The deck at the railroad station was done in twenty-four. That needs to be sealed in twenty-six. And then the normal maintenance. Good. Works.
In an analogous way to what we spoke about earlier, these are projects. Be fun to see, at least my selfish opinion, be fun to see when those will begin, when those will end, you know, so that people can say, ah, we can expect that Dockside or whatever is gonna get something or the bathrooms are gonna get something.
I'm sure he's gonna put before and after pictures on the Facebook page.
The other thing that I would propose.
We want, we want the people to know what's, when it's gonna start.
If, if I do.
Here's what I said I was gonna do. Just when it's gonna start, just, just, just like a movie, you know?
I come to you every quarter with a capital projects update. I can easily do a quarterly operations update as well. I try to do those when I am here once a month anyway, but we could do it strictly as a operations update and I could do it in the same template.
Yeah.
Like the cap projects are. Maybe not the budget part of it, but as far as what is, what was and what will be.
Yep.
Format.
And date.
You know, some.
Start, finish. That's.
Start, finish type of thing.
Yeah, I think the, the citizens, the citizen century would benefit and your department would benefit with goodwill if citizens saw before and after and lived more of your life.
Really?
Saw, saw what you're doing, saw where your project, here it is and this is what we created and here's this and this is what we created.
You ever seen him play golf? They wouldn't run a lift.
So you wish you could hit a golf ball like I do.
I agree with him. This is a.
Yes. It's public outreach. It is something that we've talked internally. I am not very good at the Facebook postings. I, I, I'm the only one that does them. So if anybody wonders who does it, it's me.
So the presumption on the four thirty-five line is, I'm just making, no, no new windows, no insulation, nothing going on inside the building? No request has been made to do anything inside the building? Nothing to do with the oil tank that's sitting outside?
That oil tank is brand new.
It's all, that's the one that's under the deck?
Yeah, it's all brand new. We did all that new.
Heating system's in good shape. So all that stuff is, is good. So it's a year-round building?
Yeah, it's the plumbing.
It's a year-round building.
Well.
No.
No, it's not a year-round building.
I'll be careful of the questions you ask. So is it a year-round building or not?
One piece of it is. Bathrooms are.
The bathrooms are, but the other piece is a three-season building?
Well, the chamber's in there four seasons. So you have the middle piece that's not.
Well, you have the, the old nursery school area where the summer, your storm windows don't work. I could go through.
Yeah.
The doors, wind comes in one, out the other.
Yeah, that's my point.
That section is not.
Well, that to me would be not a maintenance issue. That would be a building, either capital reserve or a building plan thing. If you wanna make that a four-season to rent it or do whatever you wanna do with it, that, I would not want that in my operating budget. Because the operating budget should be for recurring things. Every year we do, we have to maintain this, this and this. If we're looking to upgrade something, then I think that should be a separate thing.
So that means when we look at the maintenance capital reserve, we should look at some key items that we wanted to do this year as we put more money back in because we don't really do that.
Yeah, I'm, you know, may or may not be the right thing to say, but this is, this is where most of the people wind up when they come to visit the town or this is where we all wind up when we go down and get a cup of coffee or buy a bag of nails at the, at the hardware store. And, you know, the building probably could use a little love and, and could, and be emblematic of who we are, what we're supposed to be.
You know, that, I would, I have some, you know, we have some ideas for that. I think those bathrooms could be expanded. I think there's a lot of use in there that could be beneficial to the town. But again, I don't think that's a, that's not really an operating budget.
No, I, I got it. To me, it's not, you know, we're sitting having a budget meeting. I got it. My operating budget should be someplace else. So organizationally, I know that probably belongs someplace else. Principally, the question is, is this the right thing to, to do for one of our buildings in the downtown that finds its way, you know, that, that could be potentially a monetization opportunity for us? Not only for the people who are currently in it, but, you know, for people who may wanna use it in addition to the bathrooms, which of course we wanna do. Okay.
So would, as a board, would we want Steve to get a quote on, from a couple of local contractors on what it would cost to make that a, that space a four-season space?
I would like to look at what other big capital projects we have and then just to pick one out and say, oh, here, it should be part of a list. But I, I would like to see the list of them and see which ones we as a board agree feel is the most needed.
I kinda like, I kinda like the suggestion that says, maybe not, maybe we don't task them right now. But that one I, that one I keep in my mind as, as something that we probably will, to Linda's point, we probably wanna look down the whole tranche and say, that idea is bigger or smaller than another idea. But I wouldn't price it out right now. We kinda know it would cost a couple of bucks to do it. I wanna keep that one on.
So what about, so what about if you put it out to somebody that said, this is what you wanna do with it and let them pay for the repairs?
You could jury it out. I mean, that, you know, you could send it out and have it juried, you know, and have somebody come back and say, if you wanna restore it to what it used to look like when the trains came here.
I think John's saying have donations and have somebody rebuild it.
Jury it out.
Well, I'm saying if somebody wants to rent the building there and they wanna, they wanna put something in there, they wanna put a.
That's what I think he said.
They wanna do something with it and, and, and give us rent and then upgrade the space, then, then they would pay for it.
Whatever the right thing is. But that, to me, again, the objective, it would be to, you know, that place is, is, I'm gonna use a bad word again, it's iconic.
The rent would have to be inexpensive for them to invest all the money to make it so it could be used year-round.
It wasn't that long ago when we went through and we did, did a whole bunch of work to it. God, I think we had animals. We painted, we also did interior stuff.
I don't think the windows did.
No, that one room didn't. But we did all, I mean, it had major problems before that. So we've done some work on it. Not that we can't do more, but I mean, it's not one of the buildings that we have not paid any attention to.
But if we wanna have a separate lease for a space in that building, we might have to fix it up a little bit.
I think that is when we come down that line, we may. And that goes down to me is you, you look at your building maintenance, all the ones that we have and the ones that we feel we might wanna use out of our building maintenance, keeping a certain amount in case there's emergency. That's what I would do.
Anything else in the four hundred?
You can put that there.
Five hundred? Six hundred? It's water's dock maintenance.
Every time there's a broken board post, which happens graffiti, which is, seems to be a big problem now, bumpers, lights.
So what's the, what's the condition of the, the dock, that, that Brazilian wood that we've got downtown? What's, is it?
It's in good shape, but I mean, we, we still get broken ones from time to time. So that wood is quite expensive.
Should we, should we be treating it or is it non-treatable or?
It's non-treatable. It's the, it's supposed to be low maintenance and with the exception of it being, getting broken.
Yeah.
Yeah. Town manager and Steve, I apologize. I do have to go.
You have a good evening, sir.
Meeting will move along more swiftly.
I was gonna say that, but I held my tongue. I held my tongue.
I was thinking of Linda. It's okay.
Thank you very much, Linda.
Eight hundred series? Okay, and your next budget is bridges. This is a allotment of funds that were put into an account that we received from the state. We've been trying to create this department for, I think this is the, this will be the third year with the default budget. It's been backed out. But this basically takes money that is in that account and gives Steve and his staff the ability to do some bridge maintenance and he can speak as to the specifics of it.
So right now, what we have in here is just a simple maintenance. So we have a bridge maintenance plan that was done in two thousand seventeen from, I believe it's Underwood. That's, sells out what we need to do, when we need to do it. It's the same thing we have for the roads and the plants and things like that. So we, we treat the concrete each year, pressure wash it, clean it, seal it, replace guardrails as needed.
On the seven forty, it says, we will use the remaining funds in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four and need to budget in two thousand and twenty-five. Did you use the funds in two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four?
No, we, there's still money left in there.
So maybe we need to look at that description. I don't think it's describing. We either have used or used part of it, not that we will use.
I see a notation in red that says, all expenses will be offset by the bridge grant monies previously received.
Yes, so do I. But I'm just, this is what the description is.
Will these grant monies continue to come in or was that a one-time grant?
I believe it was a one-time grant and I believe that we have not expended any money because we literally have had no budget. So we have not had this money approved out of this line to do the work. So Steve's been absorbing it elsewhere within his operating costs.
Yeah, this doesn't actually exist in twenty-three and twenty-four or twenty-four and twenty-five because it's never got approved.
So that sentence should come out?
Right.
Doesn't, it's not describing as of, in twenty-three, did you spend twenty thousand?
We did in twenty-three.
Okay, so that's just a.
But twenty-three, we didn't have this, we took it from, I got approval from you to expend from that grant. We, then we recreated this budget to go into effect in twenty-four, which we hit default. We didn't, it never actually came about.
So what we need to know in here is what's left in the grant. Because you got a hundred and twelve and then you do, take out the twenty and then you'd have X amount that you can use in the next couple of years.
So I, I think, Linda, it's as simple as one twelve and change minus the twenty and change. I'm pretty sure that's where we're at.
That's it, yeah.
We'll have that clarified.
Okay.
So I'm thinking about a few different bridges around town here. Now, the first one would be the Bridge Falls Path Bridge. I know.
I know there was a big discussion on the aesthetic look of that bridge and what the town ended up with there. I don't know, I remember watching the meetings and saying, yeah, they, they weren't real happy with the result of the product that, that they, that they paid for, so how do we, how are we gonna?
I should clarify, John, this bridge is for road bridges.
Okay.
DOT.
DOT, road bridges.
Okay, so, so I can go into the, the other bridges that we bought that are, that are all, that we bought, I want to say low-grade, but they were low-grade, where they're all rusting out, and if we're gonna, like the Pleasant Valley Bridge, and there's another bridge up there off of Forest Road, one of the side street roads there where, I mean, they, they're, they're just, they're just all rusted. It's like the guardrails are just, they're not galvanized.
Well, so some of those guardrails are specifically that color. Intentionally, that's what was specked out by the town, because it's a more rural look guardrail. So you have to be careful with that, like if you go up and around Forest Road and all those, all those streets over there, those aren't rusted guardrails, they're specifically that color. That's how they're bought. You can't buy those anymore, by the way. They did away with them. But that's, that's a thing, or was a thing.
Okay, so, so what's the, what's the grant money got to be spent on?
Ceiling and guardrails.
Just ceiling?
Yeah, that's, that's all that we're, that's, again, that maintenance manual tells us what bridge to do, when, how, and what to do with it. And because they are all, the majority of them are all new, as long as we maintain them, which we started doing back in '23, as long as we maintain them and we keep them clean, and we keep them sealed, and we upgrade the guardrails and keep them in good shape, those bridges will last a long time.
Okay.
We don't have to do anything to them. You know, off the top of my head, guardrails on Mill Street, I mean, Bay Street by Napa, those wooden ones, those, those need some love. So those will be on our list for next year.
Okay, so I think your next item is capital outlays under the general fund for public works. I believe the first item is a broom attachment that Steve will be able to speak to.
So I mentioned earlier, when John had asked me what we do for road sweeping. We have a tow behind now, it's old. It was due for replacement. A tow behind is 50 grand. Two years ago, I rented one of these attachments that goes on the bigger loader. So what we have now is a small one that picks up, picks the debris up. Works really good for downtown. It's not really efficient to do roads with. This is a power angle, nine foot wide, water tank included broom, that goes on the front of our existing machinery that we can sweep the roads with. So instead of having a tow behind with a pickup and everything running it, we put this on the loader and we go. It's 20,000 versus 50. It runs the same brushes, more of them, but the same size brushes as our other one does, the one that we're looking at. So same manufacturer, same, same sprinkler heads on it for the water system. Everything is, is comparable, so we're trying to keep our fleet interchangeable as much as possible.
Okay. So I have a question.
Sure.
You use the loader and the brush to clean the roads?
Yes.
In the spring, when there's lots of sand on the road, there are roads that have weight limit. So do you have to wait till the weight limit is?
So there's two parts to that. One, technically, we're exempt from our own weight limits, but the loaders are not, are undersized enough that we can do that.
Okay.
So, and I give permits to people all the time based on what the weather is. So we, you know, we won't run our heavy trucks, you know, if it's a really warm day or whatever, but, you know, you, you can do it if it's a cool morning and you get an hour. That's the same way that I let, you know, appliance deliveries or dumpster trucks or anybody doing construction projects, same concept. It's a little bit of common sense.
I just, I just didn't know if certain roads would have to be done later in the season.
It would, you know, it's, that's a weather dependent and common sense, basically.
All set? Your next item is equipment for the public works garage. I believe this is items which were pulled out of the operating budget in favor of putting it out as a capital outlay, and that is the air conditioning machine and the tire machine. Steve can speak to them.
The ones we have are old, they're due for replacement. Actually, they've, they've been due for replacement for the last couple of years. So we've been making do with them, but the way the new, all of the new vehicles are coming out, AC units and things like that, we, we need to upgrade that. And same thing with the tire machine, so it gets a lot of use. So Men and Ducky, you know, with, between cruisers, all of our smaller vehicles. Now, Fire Department has three smaller vehicles. You know, MED has four. Parks and Rec has three? Three, that gets a lot of use.
Any questions? Okay, and your next item is building repairs at solid waste.
So the facility up there needs a little bit of TLC. Main office building needs to be painted and some sheet metal repaired and replaced.
If you could have one of these three, which would you choose? You like that one?
That's what I was going to ask, but I was going to do it a little different. If you had a, if you had a dice, a die, and you rolled it, and it was one, two, or three, which one would go away?
I can tell you the solid waste would be three. The other two are, are difficult. Depends on the day. The tow, if the tow behind, it goes out one day, needs to be fixed for two, so that is difficult. The problem with that is, is the, the maintenance garage is our home base hub for everything, and if their stuff doesn't work, none of our stuff works. So I would rather say, can I, give me two out of three?
I've got your order.
I would agree with Steve that the, the broom and the equipment for the garage are neck and neck. He's been trying to get the equipment for the garage for a couple of years now, has been pulled out. The need for the broom and sweeping is, John alluded to it earlier, it, it needs to be done.
It's a thing, so.
That's water quality, that's what it is.
So I, I, that's when I started asking about the 10,000. To me, the tire machine and the AC is part of, I would leave it in the operating budget, because what usually goes when we, when we try to cut a budget is capital outlay. So that's why I kind of asked the question, because it's just, I, some years we don't have any capital outlay. That's what concerns me.
Okay, next item. Your next item is the water fund. Water Department's 2026 proposed budget is $1,791,454. That's an increase of $168,706, or 10%, 10.4% over 2025. This is not an impact on the tax rate. This is something which is paid for by the rate users and is calculated into our rates. Your next slide gives you a breakdown of the entities within the water department. You have water distribution, which makes up 54.5%. You have water treatment, which makes up 33.6%. You have personnel administration, which is health insurance for sick staff? Is it six or eight? Which is 11.6%. And technology, which is 0.3%. That's a breakout of the budget, all-inclusive of the water fund. So right now, health, dental, workers' comp insurance, life insurance is currently estimated at $208,000. This, we will not know the rates until probably late in the first week, maybe the second week in November. But this is programmed with a 10% increase at this time from the 2023 four budget.
Twenty-four.
Actually, 2023 budget, technically. So this is the health insurance line. Your next line is technology. We program $5,400 annually for computer maintenance and computer hardware associated with operating the water department. It's, is just how we've broken it out previously for technology services.
So a little rewind, Jim, that means 10% rate increase in the water since the 2023 budget, which is three years, which would mean that the increase went up 3% a year, roughly?
No, because that is a variable figure depending on staffing. So staffing, if it's a single-person plan, if I remember correctly, it's about $20,000. A family plan is $40,000, 44, I think. So there's been a significant turnover in that department over the past couple of years. Seems like we've landed some stability over the past year, but as staff changes out, that health insurance could take a 20-plus thousand dollar swing one way or the other, depending on the staff member. Okay, so water distribution, 2026 proposed budget, $976,475, an increase of $154,542, or 18.8%. Couple of items of note in this department. Excuse me. You will see that debt service is dropping off. However, next year, that will probably jump up as the South Main Street project comes onboard with debt service. That's the 900 line, all the way to your right. And you'll see an increase in the labor line, which we'll be able, Steve will be able to speak to as we get there. And additionally, you'll see a slight increase in the 300 series. That increase is, a lot of it's related to the administrative allocation to pay for a portion of Steve's salary. So, 100 series.
On the South Main Street, was that a straight, or did we have a forgiveness loan on that? Or was we have a?
I, I think it is a, I, I don't think there's a loan forgiveness on that one. No.
We had some grant in there, we had.
I was just trying to figure out, and you don't need, I just, in terms of the loan, whether the loan was a forgiveness loan, and if it wasn't, then?
I don't believe it is.
And it's low interest, but I don't think it's forgiven.
We should know probably, well, by next year at this time, what that payment schedule will look like. So your 100 series? 200 series? 300 series?
And 382, you're going to have that, and then you're going to put Steve's salary, so we can take a look at this? Okay.
400 series? 500 series? 600 series?
Maintenance supplies, is that again? At 630, is that just the same as what we've had in the past? We didn't add anything new here, or did we?
We've adjusted it actually to make it more relevant, for lack of a better word. We went through this one, we updated it. We did submit this prior to the VSA conversations. So not that that's going to change a whole lot number-wise, but this is basically what we use. We did add hydrant risers.
I was wondering about that one.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a bunch that are low around town, so we want to start raising those up. You know, over time, the roads have lifted, the hydrants have not, so.
So that's about the increase?
Yep. And gate box risers. These are Sewer Road, I think.
Sewer.
Yeah, so Sewer Road, we need, we're going to pave next year. So we have to raise all those. You'll see an influx when we get to the sewer as well, for the covers specifically for that.
Okay.
700 series? So 743, you might recall, this used to be a capital outlay. Budget committee requested that it be tied into the operating budget three years ago now. We've done that since that time, we've had default budgets, so each year it's been backed out. So that's why you don't see a, a number in there for 2025 or any previous year, because it was a capital outlay. With the default budget, it came out.
So is that, is that town-wide?
Well, it's 200 of them.
200?
200 of them, so each year, we'll replace 200, so 10-year cycle. And then of course, every new water project we do, we incorporate them in as well, which is above and beyond this.
So how, the, those are the electronic ones, where the guy drives down the street there?
No, so these are yes and no. These are ultrasonic leak detection. So what I could do, once these are up and running, like if I was sitting here right now, I could tell you, there's a leak on, there's a leak at your house, for example. It'll, it'll hear it, and it'll sense it, and it'll shoot it back to the server, and we'll get, we'll get alerts all over town, depending, they're good for up to like a half mile from each meter. So the more of those we put in, the more we can identify where the leaks are, more than us going out with a stethoscope and listening. So that will help build our replacement plan.
So those are going in everybody's houses?
They will, over time, yeah. We, as, you know, if we just put in a brand-new meter in your house yesterday, we buy these, we're not going to go in and take it out. We'll wait. So we'll, we'll, we'll start to replace them in line as we go, and we'll just keep going on that and going on that. Now, if your meter dies tomorrow, we'll put those in. We have some of them now.
So how many uses do you have right now?
So it's going to take, it'll take 10 years, but, but, I mean, the meters are on, you know, they have a life expectancy of 10 years anyway. So that's the whole theory of what we're trying to do. You know, short of, again, we've been replacing meters for the last few years, we don't want to just throw them away.
So you have a set area you're going to do, these 200?
So.
Are you?
We are going to base it off of the age of what we have for meters now. Ideally, what, in a perfect world, I would look at that and say, well, I have 200, and if I can get a half a mile apart, I can put some here, 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 and here, and then we can try to get a global look. But all four of your guys' water meters could break tomorrow, and then we have to come out and, and change them. So that throws that plan out.
But would you still with, you know, try to put them even?
Yes, we want to try to put them in, in multiple different places to help start that process.
Okay.
How old are the meters that you're currently replacing?
Well, they're, we replace meters every year, so they vary. You know what I mean?
You don't target the, you, you said you.
Yes, we're going to try, that's what I said, we're going to start to target the oldest ones we have first. If we just put one in your house, I don't want to come out and just.
So how old are the oldest meters in town?
10 years.
10 years.
If we go on a 10-year cycle.
If we go on a 10-year cycle, so. Can't, as a, some of them are probably, I'm sure, older than 10 years.
So it's, it's $55,000 for 475 meters?
No, for 200 meters. No, for two hundred meters, they're two hundred and seventy-five dollars apiece. Which is actually cheaper than what we use now, which is much lower tech than what these
Eight hundred series. And nine hundred series. That takes care of water distribution. Water treatment plant, proposed budget, six hundred and one thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars, a decrease of sixty-one thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars, or a reduction of nine point two percent. Again, this is funded by the ratepayers, and you'll see some debt fall off on this as One hundred series.
Yes, one hundred series, that is a decrease. I see we have an open space, but is that because we moved Josh out of here, we're having it?
Josh is out of, he used to be in treatment, he's now classified in distribution, which is why distribution went up and treatment went down.
Okay. And he's out of here. Thank you.
Two hundred series. Three hundred series.
The three hundred consultant, what tank are we talking about?
The one million gallon Clearwell at the plant.
It's a plant tank, okay.
Six hundred series.
Are these basically the same quantities of chemicals and stuff, and it's just an increase in cost, or did you add something?
No, that's, that's all increase in cost on chemicals. And then, we did add anthracite.
Okay.
Every couple of years, I have to top off the filter media. But most of that is chemical increases, as well as increase in lab supplies.
Nine hundred series.
I like that nine hundred series. We have more of these, it would help us out tremendously.
So that is your water department budget.
Back on seven forty, is where the tractor is that we were talking about earlier. It's in that line item.
Seven forty.
You gotta pull that down.
Seven forty in the treatment plant budget is where that tractor was that we were talking about, the mower.
Oh, yep, right down at the bottom.
Just point that out.
So again, we'll clarify that narrative on both of these, but we wanted to point that out to you.
So it's not a, so it's a tractor?
No. It's gonna be, it's gonna be zero-turn, commercial-grade zero-turn for the, to take care of the hills and the things.
It's actually a pretty good price.
I priced them before we did it, so, yeah. It was, we have, you know, obviously, we'll, we'll do it the right way, but we have, we have a good working relationship with a couple equipment places that we buy our stuff from now, so.
And you expect savings over having an outside contractor do this?
So, so in this, you know, we, yes, yes, we do.
I think the other thing about it is control.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's, we can make sure that it's done when we want it done, how we want it done, and, you know, we used to have, Josh had a part-time guy, used to have a part-time guy in the water department that all he did was mow. That position went away. So we're, we're in essence, going to try to reallocate stuff that we used to do. Again, it's maintenance. I'm trying to get our maintenance back under our umbrella and get away, and if anything that has to get subbed out is more construction-based. That's across the board.
So what's the acreage that you're mowing?
At the plant, it's got to be five anyway, at the plant. You know, this won't do the cross-country lines, we have stuff for that already.
It wouldn't, it shouldn't do the cross-country lines.
Correct. We're not going to do that. So then you throw in, the public safety building has gotta be probably two, another, what, maybe two for the library. We do the retention pond out behind the old Miller Chevy there, that.
You do your valve houses too, like off of Middleton Road, and?
We have the PRV down there, it gets mowed, all the, around the hydrants, those may be weed whack, but we also do the substation, the fire substation out at one oh nine. You know, then the pump stations, Mill Street, Laney Street, you know, those are all mowable.
One of the things that we did when we brought the two operations managers in, we had some conversations, and a lot of the operations of this building now fall under Steve in conjunction with Amy and myself, Steve being Steve Pesci. So he oversees a lot of this, and is point of contact for a lot of this. So that's why you're seeing this budget here tonight, as opposed to previously, it was in, under the planner's budget. And, you know, for a period of time, we were without a planner, so we wanted to land this someplace, and we felt that it was a good place under Mr. Pesci as part of his work assignment in dealing with the operations of this building. So we'll be able to go through this budget and explain to you what is going on. Right now, the proposed budget is one hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars, a decrease of two thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars, or negative one point three one percent. One of the bigger changes that you'll see here is the cost for custodial services, which is gonna have to be a greater conversation going forward over time. We're spending a lot of money in custodial services for a number of our buildings, and I think over two thousand twenty-six into two thousand twenty-seven, we need to look at all of these lines and figure out what the best mousetrap is to deal with this. Steve and Steve will be able to answer most of the questions for you on this budget. We did, previously, in twenty, up through two thousand twenty-four, we did have a part-time person as part of the first default budget. We did away with that part-time person, went to a contracted service, which was a cost-savings measure at the time. However, over time, that cost-savings measure, at the time, worked. Now it no longer is working, it's costing us more money. So three hundred series, custodial services.
So I have a question on the building maintenance. I see a list of all the, is this the general maintenance that you anticipate to be done on the building, or is this maintenance that has been done in the past year on the building?
It's all maintenance that's been done over the course of the year.
Correct. That's what I thought, 'cause I saw the painting of the entry halls and stuff like that. So you're anticipating that you will have to spend the same amount on the building in two thousand twenty-six?
That's correct.
But you won't have to do the painting again?
Yeah, we will. We will need painting next year.
But not the same locations, different.
Different.
Different areas.
Yes.
So it's, it's the same but different. So, yes, we may have painted, you know, the heaters this year, but maybe we'll have to do the heaters next year, but we'll have to do something else next year. So the easiest way to budget is, or the only real accurate way to budget is kinda keep the scope similar and just shift it around, so to keep the cost.
I think, I think what, Brian, is I think you, you don't wanna say this exact same areas, and so the, the description needs to change.
Correct.
I had the same problem.
In a perfect world, you'd be able to go through the building before the budget season and say, I think we need these things, and then associate a number with them, so that we would be able to see what needs to be repaired, what you plan on getting repaired this year, and how much it would be for that. And that would be something I think that we should look at going forward. I mean, the window cleaning is gonna be the same, the great hall, you refinish this floor every year, correct?
We try to, yes.
Yeah. And, and things like that, things that are done on a regular basis. Door and door lock repairs, probably that's something that you do on a regular maintenance basis.
So the, the doors, this building is starting to get enough use under it. I think Steve can articulate that we, we tend to run into a lot of problems with door latches, door closures, door hardware. It, it seems to be, every couple of weeks, there's an issue with one of the mechanisms someplace in the building.
So, yeah, so the only one that I really see is, is the, the painting. So if on a yearly basis, you isolate areas that you want to repair for painting, or brickwork outside, or whatnot, and I would always put a small line in for, potentially for roof repairs, 'cause we've had two roof repairs in the last three years, haven't we?
That, that sounds correct, Brian.
Yeah, they're, they're not expensive repairs, but it's something that we have to, it's an old slate roof, and there will be a repair here and there.
And I think we have the railing out by the back entrance that's rusted, which really needs to be.
Get painted.
Painted. The amount of salt we throw on there, they probably be, need to do quite often.
Yeah, and the outside back doors.
Yeah, yeah. That is a main entranceway, so you can just walk around and just give us some ideas.
Yeah, change the narrative for painting and just say railings, this, that, the other thing, blah, blah, blah.
We will update the narrative.
Thank you.
The windows there by Brenda's office. House feels.
Yes.
They're all rotted.
Yes, we noticed that, probably about a month ago, that those are gonna need some attention. Is that the one in the corner over there, where the, the trim is all buckled up?
All that trim is not holding up well at all, John, all the way around the building. It's, it's gonna be challenging.
Well, it's just, it's just, it's, looks like it's buckling right off.
It's buckling out.
Yes, it is from the heat. It happened pretty soon after the place it was built, the heat is what's pushing it out.
And it's getting more exaggerated.
What's it made out of, that trim?
Huh?
What's that trim made out of?
I don't know.
I believe it's.
No idea.
Yeah.
It's a synthetic of some sort.
PVC, I think it's, I believe it's PVC, but don't hold me to that. I never looked at it.
Yeah, 'cause he just made it right, it wasn't in very long before it started. So we really should go around and take a look at that as we look at our maintenance
Six hundred series. Seven hundred series. And that is the summary of the budgets for this evening.
We do sewer?
Oh. I guess I didn't.
Yeah, you threw it for a loop, because we all had sewer ch, ch.
Well, I guess.
We all had lure. I had my sewer open, and all of a sudden, we were back on the rooster. I'm like.
Same with me. It took me a while to get back to where I needed to go.
I guess that's.
The same thing.
Did I not put it in? I guess that I did not put that in.
Okay, so that's my bad. Can?
I can win.
Can you go through?
Lightning round. Okay, let me get it, sorry. All right, so sewer fund total, the nice little pie chart we have here, we've got seventy-one and a half percent is for the water treatment plant, excuse me, wastewater treatment plant, two and a half percent for personal admin, oh, point two percent for tech, and then twenty-five point eight for collections.
So do you wanna start with, it's an increase of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, four fifty-eight, or eight point three percent over two thousand twenty-five, operating, fund by sewer rates, capital debt services funded by the taxpayer via sewer fund transfers, sewer fund transfer account?
That was my next page.
Yep.
Thanks, John.
This was in the other direction.
So then you got personal admin, administration, that is the insurance line, that is up twenty, almost twenty-three thousand dollars between the two. I'm assuming that is because price of insurance?
Yeah, I think that is change of staff.
Change of staff, Lawrence is at a full family plan. So, technology, that is zero change. We put in for computer maintenance, computer hardware each year, to just try to keep everything updated as we go. Sewer collections. So then you get the one hundred series. Too many pages. So you'll see in this, the supervisor salaries and stuff has, has come out as well and changed. Hourly wages are up, not much. That would be per contract, meal allowances, clothing. Any questions on the one hundreds? Two hundreds? Three hundreds?
So, a, a question for Linda, what's changed in three eighty?
Which you're, you ask it this time.
I believe the vac truck went up in price, and we added sewer main inspections.
Okay.
Yep.
How often do we have sewer main inspections? On a regular basis, or did we do more inspections, or?
We're trying to do inspections. We're trying to, as, that's part of our asset management, is to start to identify these. You know, we have an INI study, but we need to continue down that path. You know, the INI study was pretty well contained to this little area, but we have mains everywhere. We know we have some older ones, so we're just trying to get them camered, get them logged in, and so we can get them set up for replacement.
And that also takes care of the manhole to get down to the?
Yes.
Okay.
Will it ever become advantageous for you to have your own camera systems?
We have, we have one. It's a small one. It's not really, I don't, not really for us to have one to do this.
Okay.
They're, I mean, a hundred plus.
That's only five years, isn't it, now?
Well, no. It's more like ten. And by the time we get there, but by the time you get there in ten years, and you gotta replace it anyway, and ideally, we have the mains fixed, and then they're good for a hundred, and.
All right.
I mean, it's, you know, pick your, pick your tool you wanna buy. Good with the threes, then?
Yep.
Six hundreds?
Six thirty.
Maintenance supplies?
Yep. Just nothing new?
Nothing new. That's, this is routine, routine repair stuff.
The, the manhole covers.
The manhole covers for, yes, thank you, these are the ones I mentioned earlier, for um. The manhole covers for, yes, thank you, these ones I mentioned earlier, for Sewell Road. The ones we have to replace on Sewell Road before we pave. That's where the big jump is, Linda. That would be the thirty thousand dollars.
That's thirty out of the thirty-seven thousand increase.
Okay.
And I I did ask Steve, and I'm going to put him on the spot with this one. Steve, if next year we're doing Sewell Road as a capital project, is there a possibility to put this into the capital project expense?
If you, if they will give me more money for the warrant article, we could do that.
So what are we doing on Sewell Road?
We're going to pave it.
I thought you already paved.
No, all we did was shim half of it. All right, no, we only shimmed that. We're going to shim the other half of it and then we're going to overlay the whole road.
So I've been out around town and a lot of other people have been coming to me on their other streets and they're they're saying, uh, our streets are are really bad and broken up and they're they're driving down Sewell Road and they're saying, what's going on? I mean, Sewell Road's getting all the money, so that's what I'm hearing.
So that's the next on the list. So I don't want to just leave a shim coat on a road because then in two years it's going to blow apart and then it doesn't look like we did anything. So when I proposed Sewell Road for twenty-five in the warrant, I was very specific and I said, this is just a shim for this year on these sections. I was, and I said it numerous times because we still have to dig it up and put the cover replacements. So all that was because we got so much, we got so much backlash that Sewell Road was bad last year that it fell into the road surface manual replacement for two years ago and it wasn't done. So, you know, we're playing catch-up, John, across town.
Even a even a person that I know that lives on Sewell Road questioned why we were paving Sewell Road, to tell you the truth.
Again, that was, it's in the manual, it's in the road surface manual replacement plan, backed by, you know, you have one person that tells you, we don't need it. I can give you twenty that say that we do.
I I think the thing is the road service management plan. That's what we went out and did to help us decide what the order of these roads should be. Not by, oh, I like this or I like that, but the condition of the road and it was done by somebody independent.
Well, maybe what we should do is we should be providing that in some document form on our website or something.
I agree with you, John.
So some, so the people in the town can say what's going on because that's that's what's happening.
All of those are referenced in the CIP. In every road that I do, I I reference the page and the number in every document that we bring forward, so.
Yeah, but these people aren't going to the CIP, that's the problem.
How about if you take, am I correct, it'll say Sewell Road and it'll say how long and its condition at that time?
Yep. So the other part of that is unfortunately, so I came here and basically in the end of twenty-two to start project in twenty-three, right, we started projects. The manual was commissioned in seventeen and they they basically sat. So we're way behind. It was recommended then that we spend one point two million on roads. We're not, we haven't kept up with that. We've done two projects that that equal about one point two million, I would say fairly, the last couple of years, but as we've seen in these budgets, we should be pushing two million now and to stay in line. So I understand what tax and I get that.
And I think that's part of the reality and we had it back then is there's X amount of money that we have and so we never totally got to the amount we should each year. And then sometimes we did a special project.
Right.
Actually, actually, if you're, if you were in seventeen and and up to your one point two, is that what you said you were? And we're up to two million, we're actually, we're actually fifty percent behind. We should be at like three point eight.
So the other part of that is, Sewell Road is a perfect example. Sewell Road was not good, okay? It wasn't at the bad stage yet, so we can shim it and we can overlay it and we can get fifteen to twenty years out of it. If I, if we don't do anything with it and we go to a bad road right now and I reclaim it and rebuild it and repave it, by the time that is done, we get to Sewell Road, Sewell Road will be a bad road. So that is why we shim, you know, we, excuse me, we chip sealed Middleton Road. That was done over a dozen years ago. So it's taking these roads before they get to be really bad and being able to extend their life and finding that balance between that and, yes, Wombach Road is bad, Abenaki Estates is bad. I mean, I can list off roads all over town that are in worse shape, but they're bad.
But it goes to the point that I'm saying is we're we're fifty percent behind in the dollar value of the dollar. So we're actually, we're we're losing, we're.
Of course. I mean, and and Paul said that earlier, you know, we gainingly stay in staying pat and we're going backwards. That's 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 just where we are at. And that's, I mean, that's the world that we are trying to to just make do with what we have. If you give us a hundred dollars, we will give you a hundred dollars worth of work. We can't give you two hundred dollars worth of work.
We have budget constraints.
Correct.
We can't raise the, we can't raise the taxpayers.
No, you don't.
Taxes twenty percent a year, just can't do it.
I'm trying to take, I'm trying to look at it and look at it right now where we are, what a bad roads to fix versus also looking at the next five years to say, all right, if we can do a little bit to this one now, like, all right, can we shim and overlay Sewell Road now, which it should be done because it was at its, actually at its time? Or do we leave that alone and we go over here and we do this one and by the time I come over here, we're going to rip the whole road up? So it's trying to save some of these before they get too bad, along with fixing the real bad ones too.
And I have people that come to me the same way as they do you, John, and I try and tell them, you have to look at a couple of factors. How how much has your road traveled? Sewell has a lot of houses on it. Sewell has the marina on it. There's a lot of traffic on that road. It would be more than on Abenaki Estates. So there is a car count, the amount of use, and I actually had somebody come to me two years ago and said, I can't believe they're paving this road when they haven't done one oh nine A. And I was like, well, one oh nine A is a state road, so we, when that is lousy, that's not our fault. But people, a lot of people assume that we're supposed to pave one oh nine and one oh nine A also until you explain it to them. And then they go, oh, okay, I understand that's on the state. And the state puts those on a ten-year plan.
And I I think, I can sit here and tell you, the road surface management plan states, I have it opened up now, Sewell Road in twenty twenty should have received an overlay.
And I think that's.
It did not receive, so now we're in that position where we're six years later and, okay, here we go.
And I'm sure that that plan took into account road usage and lots of other things.
Maybe we take that sentence and that that gets put in the slide when we look at doing the different roads. Why, this is the reason I did it. Am I correct that we do a certain number, we do a rebuild and we do an overlay shim? So when we get the warrant article, you have hit the different categories.
Correct. So I tried to do, I tried to do an overlay, I tried to do a a chip, a prevention, and I tried to do a, you know, a full reclaim is what I am trying to do. Unfortunately, it's it's with nine hundred thousand dollars, it's getting to be more and more difficult to to pull that off. But we've been able to do it over the last couple of years. And, you know, Sewell Road is a big road. It's it's a big chunk to bite off for next year. But I would love to have that off the list because then it's it's off the list.
So the other, the other big thing is construction. You have dump trucks that are going up and down the road all the time. So where that corner was there, I remember there was a house that they lifted in the springtime there and the trucks were going down that road. That's how that, that's how that corner got all broken up that one spring there and that was.
And so it's, to Brian's point, it goes off of traffic, it goes off of all of that. It's not just because that's, it's that particular road and that's why we're doing it. It should have been done six years ago. I could open that manual and say, there's roads that should have been done ten years ago that aren't done.
Yep.
It's it's, and the other thing that I tried to do is we do some on this side of town, we do some on this side of town, we're trying to do some on that side of town, so we're trying to spread that out. So it's not just, we're going to do everything over here. And then we're going to do everything over here. It's it's trying to spread it out for the ones that, the people that come in out of town, the ones they travel on and just try to spread the money the best that we can and get the most out of it.
No, you do a good job. I mean, uh, we're losing buying power. If you did it six years ago, you would have got more roads done for the money.
Of course.
I mean, this is saying, six years ago, to overlay Sewell Road was two hundred and forty thousand dollars as a ballpark estimate in twenty seventeen.
Yeah, and it's not. Not by law.
So maybe at the deliberative session, Steve, you you bring forward your list like you always do. These are the roads I'm going to work on and it will be nine hundred thousand dollars. I could do these additional roads here that I consider in need for an additional this much and I could do all of them, the whole nut for that much and just so that the people can see, this is the choices we're making.
Which is how I, I, last year I did three options and I believe, I believe you guys brought, or the budget committee, one of you two brought it from nine hundred down to seven and then, or maybe that was the year before. And then on the floor, they put it back up to nine hundred.
Correct.
So I had, I made them the year before last.
I think it was the year before.
So I always have, I have, I have multiple lists secondary. Well, if I, if you give me nine hundred, you're going to do this. You give me seven hundred, we're going to do this. You want to give me two million, you do this. You want to give me two hundred million, well, then I'll do this.
Every road would be done and every sidewalk.
Yeah, and I can retire. So.
And all the drainage and all the water lines.
Okay, moving on. Uh, six hundreds. Seven hundreds? Hmm, eight hundred? Nine? That's it for sewer. And we do not have any capital overlays for water sewer. I think we're done.
Okay.
I think we are.
Um, did you do treatment? Sewer treatment?
Sewer treatment.
Thought we did that.
Sewer treatment.
I thought we went.
My bad. Okay, sewer treatment.
So sewer treatment, um, this is going to look like a a big jump, but a couple of factors here is, we've actually gotten ahead of the schedule this year with our contracted operator and we have the solid number for twenty twenty-six to plug into the budget, which we have not had for the past couple of years until late. So we actually have the good operating number for twenty twenty six at this point and Steve can speak to it. You will see a warrant article coming to you for the capital projects that they're recommending as well.
So three hundred series, you'll see the jump, but that's, um, that was because the number that was in for twenty twenty-five is not, wasn't accurate. And you can see it over in the left-hand column, you can see where it it actually was, eight thirty-four. So it didn't jump up quite as much as that column looks. Any questions with that? Four hundred? Five? Nine? Now I think we're done.
Now we're done.
Now we're done.
So in our last meeting, we talked about potentially investigating the South Main Street sewer because we don't know when that's going to come about with the state. And what's our, what's our life expectancy of of our system? Do we have leaks? Are we?
Mike? We have infiltration there. It's not, we're not leaking effluent out, we're leaking water in. It it needs to be replaced. We we know that. We, none of us expect any catastrophic failure with it, which unfortunately is why we don't rank higher. The comment was, well, you know, if it blew apart, you guys could get money faster. So, you know, that's, there's not much we can do with that. So we are, we are continuing with the with the plan. We are continuing with the permitting so that hopefully when it comes about again to reapply in the middle of summer, we can have, we'll be even more ready and hopefully rank higher for twenty-seven.
So I have, um, two asks that are kind of a pain in the neck, but I'd I'd like to see them. For streets and highways, we have a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollar increase at twenty-three point five percent. I I hope that we revisit that as a a board and I would like to see if you could just give me a list of the biggest drivers, just bullet points. These are the biggest drivers for that hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. And the same for water distribution, that was seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and six dollars and just.
Well, distribution is because of him. That's strictly his salary. So his salary, if you noticed, it was, it was, it dropped.
It was off on the other side.
Yeah, it drops down on the distrib, on the treatment side and compensates on it for that side. That is, that is the biggest reason.
All right. So then just for the streets and highways, just your biggest drivers. So we know, so that we can explain to the general public and we know exactly what the biggest drivers.
So I can tell you, if you go to the drainage line, the budget is twenty-two thousand dollars and we go to fifty. So there's, you know, there's twenty-eight thousand dollars in there alone. Sand and salt.
Yeah, there's probably about five or six things. If you could give those for me, that would be it. That would be great.
Yep. But yeah, they're.
There it is, right there.
It's right there.
I, you're, you're six thirty, six thirty-three, six thirty-four. That that, those are your your big drivers.
There's a hundred and, there's a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in those three lines right there.
That's why I kept on asking my question. That's why I was trying to get it. Did we add something or is it just doing what we've done?
And if you go back to the vehicle maintenance line, which is four thirty-five, I believe, you know, that's been budgeted at one thirty-five in the default and we routinely blow past that. You know, and where we are now, I have things that are broken that I can't fix until next year and it's just, we keep going backwards that way. We keep going backwards that way.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I can, I can write that down for you though, Brian, if you can. I'll put the account numbers on it and send it to you.
If we put it in layperson words.
Yeah, just send it out to all of us and we will have it.
Yep, not a problem.
Thank you.
You fool, you went in on public. Do you have any questions for us? All right.
Swallow it. I'm Karen Burnett Curie. Can you, is it mine?
Yep.
From Wolfboro. I'm actually don't have, I have questions, but they're not questions I'm expecting to get an answer about tonight. I'm just, um, so one of the things that's been talked about at a number of these different budget sessions is getting the public to understand some of the reasoning behind whether or not something is increased or it's decreased because it's been moved to a different place. As a layperson, I have to find that whole disc, all those discussions very confusing. So, um, and and not only is that confusing, but then you have all the conversations around, the public doesn't understand the enterprise funds versus the, you know, regular government expenses and they don't understand, um, you know, things like the whole discussion around the inventory of maintenance. As I'm understanding it, of maintaining all the vehicles, there's an inventory of headlight bulbs or oil. And don't quote me, I'm just, you know, whatever the part is. But I don't understand why that's not just a revolving fund because if you're billing the department for the actual repair that was done and the bill includes the part, then where's that money going, which was what I was interpreting as part of the question that was asked, are we be, are we paying for it twice in the bill from the police department for their headlight or and in the public works department for the inventory? And so that became, made that very confusing to me. I mean, I'm, I was imagining imagining an inventory where you're reimbursed by the bill that you charge to whichever department it is and the fun, and the money goes back into that fund for inventory and you buy a new bulb because you know someday you're going to have to put it in another vehicle. But I think, I think for you to expect us to understand all those intricacies is extremely difficult. And then I'm going to add on to that, the, uh, let's say, for example, the website. We have a page on the website that lists the departments. Well, the departments are Abenaki Skiria, Clark Museum and Libby Museum. Now, I don't, those don't to me represent government departments. I mean, I understand them as, as things we pay for, but they're each handled differently. pay for, but they're each handled differently, but in public works, we have something that's called a Department of Public Works, we all look at DPW, and we say, oh, we know that's a department, but on that page of departments, there's listed a garage division, a highway division, a, a public works, not department, just public works, and a solid waste disposal facility, so I look at that, and I go, okay, which of those are departments, which of them are facilities, which of them are pieces of the public works department, and which of them are, you know, comparable to the town assessor, or the fire and rescue department, or the police department, those are all listed, but how did I get a garage division? Because I don't see the garage division as being comparable, it's something that falls under, for, in my mind, under Department of Public Works, so I think we add confusion by the way we list them on our website, by the way we categorize them in the budget, by the way we describe them as enterprise funds, or not enterprise funds, and, and I think if we sat down and thought about the kind of nomenclature we have going on here, we'd understand that it's adding to our confusion, not helping us, the public, understand what's going on, and then my, my other comment that I think that would help that is, we have in our town report, for example, a list of the, of the properties that are tax exempt, some of those describe what they are, they might say a church, or something, some of them don't, you'll notice, though, in some town reports, they'll list the exempt property, the lot number, or whatever, and it'll say, fire department building, or it'll say, you know, that's where the library is, I think that helps us, as a general public, to understand, when we're talking about all of the facilities that we own, that we have to maintain, or that were renovated, you know, last year, but this one over here hasn't been renovated for 50 years, or this building was moved to the Clark Museum, and it's owned by the town, even though we all associate the Clark Museum to the Historic Society, but the wall wasn't put in properly 50 years ago when it was moved there, I think, I think that all that can't be conveyed, but if, if the list of town exempt property listed the building, for example, the electric building is in one of our buildings, but it's in there under a different circumstance, and the town owns it as an electric department building, I, I couldn't understand that conversation when it took place around the electric bill, I will say this, when I went, went into the town to have, have a question about my electric bill, I was sent out to the electric building and told, they don't have access to the information that the town uses for billing, et cetera, and I said, well, you're telling me that you're the electric department, but you can't access the online information that the town puts out about electric bills, and meters, and stuff that I can go into and look at, and they said, no, we can't, so that right there told me there was some separation between the electric department and town government that I wasn't aware of, I mean, just as, so anyways, I, I think there's work that could be done that could help us understand things better, and I think one of the things that, that is an example of that is that when select board member, oh, first off, on our website, we list boards and committees, but the select board is not listed as one of the boards or committees.
It's listed in a different spot, and I did it today, the same thing.
It's listed separately, and I don't, I mean, you know, just put it in the list of boards and committees.
I think, I think they, I think they pulled it out so it would be easier to find, because it's in one of the main lists.
Right, but I, yeah, but I ended up on the boards and committees list, looking for the select board, and it wasn't there, so it's really easy electronically to just...
Put it in two places.
To put it in two places and have it go to one, I mean, I think, again, it's examples, and we can look at our website and various other things, so, but one of the things that's been, that came up tonight was, you know, communicating some of these things to the public, and I think that one of the things that kept being said was, well, if you could tell people that, and that was directed at the staff sitting here, and it's not clear to me that it's up to them to communicate all this, it's all that funnels through someplace, obviously, it all funnels through the town manager's office, because they're overseeing the website, they're overseeing the budget, they're overseeing a lot of things, but I think a lot of these things could be, the information flow could be rotated amongst departments, and be fed out of a central location out to the public, I don't think it's up to every department head to run their own face, or division head, or facility head, or whatever way we're calling it, categorizing them, to run their own Facebook page, and expect me to go to every one of those Facebook pages and find the information I need, whereas if you have a central way of, of, you know, rotating information around each of the departments that flows through a central location is coordinated, and I can go to a blog, a Facebook page, a art, a column in the newspaper, a, you know, whichever way I access information, it could all, if I, if there was an article put out every week, it could go out as a blog, as a, as a Facebook post, as a, as an article, and, you know, column in the newspaper, and all, you know, and track it on the website, and that way I would be able to find all the information, not hunt and peck for it. One other item, I'm the person who's the light host at the Baqay boat ramp, in the summertime, every Sunday, and, and I'm glad to see that it's on the list, because we lose boats off the boat ramp, they fall off the cement, which only goes a little ways into the water, and then they can't get back up again, and if they're a heavy boat, it's really problematic, because they don't have enough people to go out there and lift the boat up, to get it up over the edge of this cement drop, so, I'm appreciative of that, I'm also appreciative of the fact that we're trying to teach people who pull trailers with boats on them, that they need to swing wide around the stone.
So we could use an IT person, we had one a long time ago, but the IT person that we have would have to be able to take care of hardware, of software issues, work with Block Five, would have to be able to manage the entire town website, make sure that they managed Facebook pages if each individual department wanted Facebook pages, have out a community calendar, this is a lot of work.
Yeah, but, but I'm saying, you know, if, if I were a news, news reporter, just let's say I'm a reporter for the Granite State News, and every week I do a column on, you know, or I'm a, a teacher at the high school, and I'm teaching the class English IV, or whatever it is, and I have students who go out, and they interview a department, you know, as part of their coursework, and they come back and they write a column, that column, I even I, who not get that technically adept, could then post that on a webpage, right, all I have to have is permission, and go in, and then the same mechanism on the same whatever, I could, I could put it on, I could put it up on a Facebook page, a town Facebook page, I could, I mean, one person could do all those steps, and it could all be done in less than, you know, hiring a whole IT person who has to, I understand, there's a whole world of IT out there that has to be done for the town, and I'm not suggesting that for this little piece of the information flow problem, but you can't dump all the information that, that the public needs on them in one meeting, or two meetings, I mean, I've sat through enough of these meetings, and I have to stand to stick, to stay alert, you can't, people need the information over time, and they need to have, you know, the kinds of questions and answers that are done, you could take little clips from even this, some of these sessions, like around the roads, and, you know, you take a little clip of it, and you put it out, you write down whatever was quoted, and that's a column right there, you know, there's, it's, it's something that could be done, and is done by nonprofit organizations all the time, and very, they don't have much time to dedicate to it, but they still understand the importance of communicating the information, and I'm not gonna look at 12 department Facebook pages to see what they're informing me of, I think there's a more efficient way of doing it for the town and for the public.
Thank you. Hey, somebody like to make a motion to go in non-public?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you.